With all our meeting in order, welcome to tonight's trustee meeting in this off-campus setting. Thank you all together in here. The desk, please call the hall.
Chair Malcolm.
Here.
Chair Davis. Chair Carter Murray.
Chair Murray, here.
Secretary Patrick. Chair Christine Fleming.
Here.
Christine Lino. Christine Fain.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, hmm. Of course.
In support, is there any discussion, any corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very opposed? Then the scheme is approved. Thank you. Tab A in our agenda tonight, the recommendation is that board trustees approve the minutes on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve minutes?
I'm going to approve the minutes. I can.
Second, is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say that, um, I don't know if Julie Thistle abused me, but I thought that the discussion of what she said, I don't know if that would be the way to put it, send a family, um, other topic.
Thank you, Julie, and I hope you can do better tomorrow. Thank you. All in favor of the approval of the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Very opposed? The minutes stand approved. Thank you. We move to citizen participation. Verbal communications. W U C C Education Association is Julie Thistle. Welcome.
Hello and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
It is January twenty-two. Our new year, a new challenge for us. All some days it seems like we're just people who have problems. Other days we need to see a new life here. We are also saying goodbye to another of our fellows. The gentleman called Rocky, Terry May, and Tim Jones. This is another thirty-plus years of peaceful hours. We do wish them the very best in all of this. So as we began this master with the delayed classroom, I wanted to share some of the comments that I received. Of course, I haven't shared many of them in my regular reports. Some of the faculty noted, given all the tough decisions that will be made, that will need to be made in that class, is there any effort to improve the decision-making process? Or, if you are sincerely trying to decrease COVID on campus?
Yes. Would you remove your mask so we can more clearly hear you?
That feels great.
Thank you.
It feels strange, but it's great. So the second quote, if you are sincerely trying to decrease COVID on campus, why don't you follow OSHA, the CDC, and acquire COVID vaccines? Relaying one week of instruction doesn't change the risks, vaccines will. Another, unlike my colleagues, I do not support a remote start. Students and faculty who've signed up for face-to-face are not necessarily equipped to pivot to remote. Another, I am willing to be flexible wherever needed, because I love W C C and our students. However, being flexible and putting in all the work to make this change happen is really upsetting because it's not necessary. And another one, I am very concerned for everyone's safety. Now, I'm not here to debate the choice of the delay, as that decision was made before our discussed return on January fourth. As I noted to the membership, there are many open questions during that first week of January. Who we worked is many of those questions addressed as quickly as possible, and for information to be shared freely. Of course, there was no answer that was satisfactory to all. And it was because of this that with the help of the W C C A Board, we provided additional points for the administration to consider as we move forward. Those ideas looked to gain clarity around how the institution planned to manage and balance the needs of the entire campus. So we stated in a compilation of notes to the president on January seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, that we are not advocating for a one-size-fits-all approach for dealing with COVID-related absences or changes. We also remain concerned about how our current policies may encourage faculty and staff to report to campus even when they are sick, which puts us all at risk. The W C C E A is still very committed to creating its own COVID sick bank to cover the sick time for our members, and it presented language to the college regarding this. We've also encouraged the college to consider a general policy of its own to protect the college committee at a time and all upon is still a formidable threat. So while the first three weeks of this new year have been just as busy as the last twenty-one months of the pandemic, the W C C E A continues to fulfill the rest of our duties. We have no grievances at this time, and we continue to firmly prepare for the start of the two thousand and twenty-two negotiations. The W C C A Board will vote on its negotiation team on Thursday and begin the task of solving the issues that need to be covered. I do believe that President Block and I both feel that this negotiation can be won in this whole game. There is much to be discussed and considered as we review the many letters of agreement we have agreed upon during this pandemic, and what the future of higher education will look like. Surely, this won't be an easy process, but the W C C A is committed to negotiating in good faith and having open conversations. Now, as we have just celebrated Martin Luther King Junior Day, I'm reminded of his words at Cornell College in Iowa on October fifteenth, nineteen sixty-two. He said, "I'm convinced that men hate each other because they fear each other. They fear each other because they don't know each other. And they don't know each other because they don't communicate with each other. And they don't communicate with each other because they are separated from each other." And further, the former W C C A presidents have always reminded us that the goal is to keep talking, and that is the way for me. The Dr. King and their words are ever so powerful today, and the W C C A will continue its efforts to keep communication moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments this evening? Any written communications that we've received, Vanessa and Don, you've shared with us? Next on our agenda are special reports. They give an update tonight on our Health and Fitness Center from B D Barnes. And it is Don Lyons. Welcome.
Thank you, uh, as I'm accompanied by the director for the Health and Fitness in Mr. Don Lyons. So just going to open up this presentation. Uh, this we do about every two years. I would go through how the fitness is doing, and last time this was done was in January of two thousand and twenty, so we knew that by the end of the week tonight. In terms of the initiatives and accomplishments over the past year, or sorry, since our fiscal year twenty-one, we've steadily been rebuilding the membership. As you know, it collapsed after the, you know, because of the pandemic, we had closed it for two months. Uh, but it's since increased quite a bit. The guys were up about eighty percent since the world went down. And you'll see some more numbers a little later in the presentation. We've also done some important maintenance and repairs, uh, importantly, the resurfacing of both pools, uh, which was very important to the convenience. Uh, we've had some ongoing issues, and we'll be able to get that done. Our net promoter score, uh, has gone up from sixty-eight percent to eighty. It's basically, if you fill out a survey and go somewhere, this is how likely you are to recommend a school friend. So eighty percent, uh, been very high over the business, and very, very high in the P S score. Uh, and we've, for the third time, been certified as a medical fitness center. And Don has been going forward to that in the presentation as well. In terms of the financial performance, uh, you'll see, first I'll talk about revenue. Uh, revenue decreased substantially this fiscal year twenty-one, uh, one point seven million dollars, bringing five point five million this year. However projected, you can see there where if we're on a, uh, strong upward trajectory, we're going to push forecasting three point three million. Uh, and importantly, if you look at the net operating income line, in fiscal year twenty-one, we actually had an operating loss. Uh, but this year, we're forecasting to be roughly breaking, you see the fifty-four thousand dollars there, roughly breaking. Now importantly too, this net operating income has not been sufficient, uh, to pay for our bond. The bond, we have the bond payment of one point two million dollars each year. Uh, but what we have received, the HERP funding actually covers our loss strip. So it covers the loss strip, and even for this. So at the very bottom there, I've added a memo line, shows that HERP funding. Uh, so without that HERP funding, we would not have been able to pay for the bond, at least with the proceeds that are given this year. So with the HERP funding, we already have. But yeah, the key message here is that we should break even this year, and we're continuing to work on getting this more. Here are the membership trends, and you can see that it was very much an upward trajectory until, um, the pandemic. And we had a pretty big drop-off in fiscal year twenty-one, reaching a low point. I mentioned on the summary slide, uh, in December of two thousand and twenty, with a backup, as of the end of this past calendar year in December, almost four thousand, or two thousand and thirty-five thousand. In terms of the member segments, uh, we really haven't seen a lot of change, uh, even with the drop-off. Uh, in other words, the, the drop in members was pretty equally divided among community, corporate, et cetera. Uh, medical integration remained a little bit higher in fiscal year twenty-one, because those before their medical purposes. But generally, no change or equal change amongst all of us. In terms of our membership dues, I think it's very important to mention that we've been able to maintain the, the membership dues for quite a while. And you see the, the increase in membership dues even over the past, uh, ten years or more. It's been very stable, and over the last four years, less than increased at all. But also importantly, for students, uh, he, he is actually gone now. So if you look at the yellow line, uh, that line is actually gone now, so price for students is actually. Uh, member satisfaction, I covered this briefly in the summary slide, but, uh, again, we reached eighty percent, uh, for this score, uh, largely due to facility updates. People appreciate, uh, facility updates such as, uh, resurfacing of the pool, as well as the safety protocols. And they've generally been seeing things. In terms of usage, if you look at the blue line, you can see that while increasing, we're still about half of where it used to be in terms of, uh, the total visits. But the yellow line, that is the visits per member. And we're actually have more visits per member now than pre-COVID. So the people that are coming back to the gym are coming even more frequently than they used to. So I think that's a very important point. Uh, now I'm going to turn it over to Don to walk you through some of the specific initiatives over the past couple of years.
Good evening, um. I hate getting emotional in front of people, but I just want to give a thank you to the college for your support. It's been a very difficult two years, and everybody who runs a business knows that. And the college has not been isolated from that at all. But I do think that our partnership with the college, um, I can stand before you tonight. I'm probably the only, the only center with power wellness that has been maintaining its entire management staff through this pandemic. And I think a lot of that has to do with the support that we've received from our client over the past two years. And I know many times our members come in and they're concerned about their safety. Well, I was concerned about our staff being in the building for eight hours plus a day. And we are a brick-and-mortar store, who know business, or we're face-to-face with the client. It's not an option. I, um, so I just want to say thank you, um, and that we have been able to avoid outbreaks at the center. It's coming from people's family members, things they do outside of the center. And so I just want to say thank you. Um, you've made my job much easier during a very stressful time. And I think thanks doesn't seem like enough.
We thank you too.
Um, and I just, as you know, um, as we look at some of these initiatives, it, it, it's been even more difficult during the pandemic. And I will say that, um, the pandemic is driving what's happening at fitness centers everywhere. You know, because it's changing. Just when we think it's going to get better, then we have another variant that comes along. Uh, but we continue with the students to participate in welcome days. Um, we participated in the stress-less event at the end of the semester. We started off offering some Zoom meditation class to students. Um, that, you know, we didn't get a lot of participation in that, but we're willing to try new, um, new offerings to the students. And we welcome, when we work with the staff from the college, if they have ideas, we try to support and participate if we're asked to in any capacity. Um, currently, the W C C basketball, um, club basketball teams use our facility nightly for their practices. The W C C competitive dance teams are using our exercise studios for practice. And, um, we're also, um, host of the W C C dance classes in our studios as well. And that's very positive, because it's just giving people more exposure to the facility. And many of our, um, club sports teams, they are members at the center. And so it just drives the students across the street, which is really important right now. It is a community school, we don't have as many students on campus right now. As we look at the community initiatives, those are also open to students, so they're not exclusive, exclusive to just community members. Um, we have been offering free monthly health and fitness, sorry. Free, um, health and fitness-related workshops to both our center members and non-members. We've offered meditation classes, both in-person and virtually, trying to make a con, uh, an effort to address not just exercise, but just overall mental health and wellness for our members and students. We continue to offer fitness challenges monthly through Blue One Fifty, Turkey Burn. We also will provide nutrition and health and wellness offerings, both virtually and in-person as well, to members and community members and students. And we try to make sure that in all those areas, we're offering something, and no additional cost to students, members, and community. We also look for ways to partner with other organizations in the community and give our, our members an opportunity to partner with us in those, um, outreaches. For example, the diaper driver we had for S O S Community Services in December. Our members really responded and stepped up, providing diapers and wipes to, um, the S O S Community Services. We do school supply drives for a local elementary school each August. And as always, supporting the W C C Ball founding and scholarships for students. Um, one of our most popular, that is ongoing daily, is the Moore Foundation, where people just donate their used, um, tennis shoes. They drop them in a box, when it's full, FedEx picks them up, they send us an empty box. And this is providing jobs and trees that they're whole country. It doesn't cost us anything, and I think it really fits with our, our green facility that we're just trying to recycle and help, um, the environment. We also do some of the other things, Hope Clinic, Big Hearts for, for seniors or other organizations. As we look at the future, um, we continue to partner with Buxton. It's a leading consumer analytics company, and they assist us in helping us really dial in on our marketing, so that if we do our direct mail pieces, we are targeting, um, individuals by generation. We do this about three times a year, and our average member drive time, we know, is about sixteen minutes from the center. That's actually gone up, it used to be fifteen minutes. Um, we've also just rebranded our Next Steps program. It's now My Fit R X Fitness Programming. It's an eight, an eight-week program that is designed to improve the thought activity, um, in individuals living with a chronic disease, managing medical conditions, or who need additional support. And, you know, we partner with two major health organizations. And we also, um, had those continued COVID pandemic safeguards, so that we can reach out to individuals who are dealing with medical issues. And so I just, again, appreciate the college's support in those endeavors. Uh, we've also been focusing in on retention. We have gone to online booking of lap swimming and class reservations. Um, right now, as a company, we are beta testing also a new phone app and virtual class platform that every member at the center will have access to. And we hope to be rolling that out in the next fiscal year, which will just give more options to our members, especially when they're traveling and away from the center. And then we've also, as you know, we have continued the use of our bridging policy, two to four months, where people could be away from the center. With COVID, we've expanded that, because some people just were not ready to come back to the center due to the pandemic. But we know that they're more likely to come back if we just put their membership on hold and let them come back when they're ready. So we've been, um, extending that. We do have individuals that have yet to come back, but their membership is still on bridge. And it was mentioned earlier, we did go through our third Medical Fitness Association, um, center certification. It's never an easy task, but even more difficult during the pandemic. Um, but I'm very proud of the team and the efforts they went to get ready for this. And not just the team with the programming inside the center, but also the facility's support. And I think it's just worth noting that, um, a couple of things to mention from the examiners that are outside examiners, just mentioned that our medical advisory committee, which is made up of, um, two physicians, a head of probability, um, Dr. Val, Valerie Greaves, just how engaged they are as a medical advisory board. All of them were there for the site visit, which usually it's just the medical director, and I've been through it before with other centers. So it was, um, it was, I just, it was good to have all of them there. And not just there, but they all had input and were very engaged with the, um, with the site survey, sorry, site surveyors. And they commented on that, and they talked about the streets of the center. But they also wanted to give praise to the back of the house, how clean and neat and lively it is. So that would be our pool pump rooms, our, you know, the, the parts that our, our members never see. So the facilities department here in heaven, who work in our building, just the Don leads you. Um, they take pride in it, and it's nice to be able to show that off to outside people. And how much pride is taken in those areas. Let's talk, talk a little bit about, uh, the medical advisory board. We only meet four times a year, we email back and forth quite a bit. But this committee has looked over our COVID-nineteen safety protocols before we opened. They also oversee our programming, emergency responses, um. They also are kind of that liaison with the medical community as far as referrals. Um, and also, we refer back to them, it's just not them referring to us. Um, they help us review some of those difficult cases or unique cases that we've come across. We also look at, at all of our incident reports, and just making sure that we're providing a, a safe environment for our members and staff. The other thing too, just to note through that Medical Fitness Association certification, the requirements with that is the fact that all of our fitness specialists have four-year degrees, and all of our staff is accredited, um, with the, I, they have a certification that's accredited. And I think that really is what sets us apart, because we are the only medical fitness center in the city of Ann Arbor. And I just thank you for your support and value of that certification that we have. And it does set us apart for the future in being able to deal with health crisis that is we're facing right now, because people are more sedentary than they were two years ago. So I thank you for that. Um, as we, um, mentioned, some of the center improvements, um, resurfacing of a lap pool and therapy pools took place. We also have rebuilt the men's spa, the women's was done the previous year, now the men's spa has been rebuilt. The college also purchased HEPA air purifiers that are located in all of our group exercise studios and key locations throughout the fitness center. And so I thank you for that. Um, the hair, the air handler unit coils were replaced. We've done maintenance on the chillers, the sand filters, sanitary subcombs replaced. Work was going on during the time we were shut down and we first reopened. As we look for other major, uh, projects, um, refrigeration monitoring upgrade. We got, we had need to refinish one of our group exercise rooms, refresh the gym floor, and then we'll be purchasing a few pieces of, um, fitness equipment in the coming year. But that's limited just due to the time that we've been closed and we reduce traffic at the center. I'll turn it back over to Sutari now, in summary.
Just in summary, you can see, uh, from some of the statistics, but also more importantly, what Don has mentioned, uh, that this facility has continued to strengthen the social community for many many years, and continues to do so. Um, we're getting back on track. You know, it wasn't, um, it wasn't ideal during the pandemic, but it's very much turned around. And, um, I heard from the public that as well, we'll screw this, but I think we're rolling our way back to getting that to the board. Correct, are there any questions for our, uh?
Yes, we're basically, so of the members, whether they was student members or not, um, was all of their, during the pandemic, you said some, the memberships were put on hold like two to four months. Is that for everyone, or some have just canceled their memberships, or how did that work?
If a membership is put on hold and we're not billing them for their membership. We had a policy where for a minimum of two months, a maximum of four months, you could get your membership on hold. But with the pandemic, we realized that there would be people that would not be ready to come back after we reopened in four months. But we also realized that by allowing them to bridge, there's a high, I think thirty percent more of a chance that they're going to come back to the center than if they cancel their membership. So, um.
And that's been the case so far?
It has been. And, and obviously, every month, we'll have those that have been on bridge. They're like, it's a year and a half, I'm not ready, I'm just going to cancel, and that, and that's fine. And at some point, we'll reach that, you know, where, I don't know, we'll ever go back to normal, but at some point, we'll have to make people make that decision. We can't, you know, but we're not there yet.
So it sounds like maybe still we're, we're doing uptick then and trying to regain perhaps the level of membership we had, say, before, or even just as we entered that pandemic. Do you think maybe we're still on upswing to get most of those people back?
Yes, we're seeing a slow but steady climb back up each month. And you'll, and you'll notice with the, with the trends, like the variance, you'll get a little bit of a dip, more bridges, but it's been pretty steady each month.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you for your recordings, Roger.
Christine Corney.
Um, I've got a few questions. Uh, it looks like we're at about fifty percent of what our peak membership was, and grown. Um, how long could they off the bond, one of those bonds, once their termination date?
The bonds we pay off in two thousand and twenty-seven.
Two thousand and twenty-seven. Okay, and I know that with the federal funding, uh, we are still relying on that this fiscal year to have a, um, or to break even or better. Do we foresee that funding, uh, coming in beyond this year, or what, what are we looking at? I'm not sure exactly what the Fed will.
No, this, um, this funding will expire, uh, this fiscal year. So this will be the last time that we get additional HERP funding to support the fitness center. So going forward, the fitness center will have to, um, run a, a, a line.
And then there's a net. What happened to that net? Did we have a, um, a balance sheet that has?
It's in our general fund.
Pardon me?
It's in our general fund.
So it is in the general. Um, the general fund is, what percentage of our, of the, of fitness centers are you able to say at the moment?
It's a separate budget. The, the, the fitness center isn't in the general fund per se. Uh, it's in the observatory fund. Uh, but at the end of the year, what happens is.
So that goes into the W C C, Jerry?
Yeah, this is, the way I think about it, it's similar to what we, 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 uh, but it's in a different fund.
Okay. And then, um, is the Health and Fitness Center staff, are they independent of the community college? Or are they part of the community college staff?
Um, they're, I'm sure, um, they're employees in power wellness, or a management company. That we've been with the college since, um, even conception of the fitness center, through the design, build, and we have, we run the programming within the building, but the college handles, like, the facilities.
So you're an independent contractor, and you hire the staff that works it?
Correct.
Is your staff, are they unionized, and what is their lowest base pay for a staff there?
They're not. They're not. And currently the lowest would be at eleven.
Eleven dollars an hour? Do you have, I noticed here COVID-19 safety protocols is are advised by the medical advisory board. Are there currently, um, vaccination requirements? Man, what, what are your requirements for both for staff and for members that use the facility?
Um, right now we would fall under what the OSHA requirements would be. So we were in the process of having all of our sta- staff upload their vaccine status. And they can continue to upload their booster. Um, we require masks for our staff at all times. So that's where we're at. We have not mandated a vaccine requirement for our staff yet. We, you know, if they're exposed, then, you know, we were following the guidelines about being off and, so that we make sure that we're not exposing other staff or members to.
About users, members?
We get a few reports and we, we do let our members know. We don't want them there if they're sick. And if they call, then I will, you know, it's usually they've had an exposure because they think they've had one. So they'll call me and we'll ask them to stay away, um, the allotted time that it's now at least five days if they don't develop symptoms. And, um, I'll ask them where they were at, were they, you know, closer than six feet? Were they masked the entire time? So we would go through that process for our members, just like I would for an employee.
The reason I'm asking this, so I'm a member of the Michigan Theater.
Okay.
And they require vaccinated proof of vaccination for you to go to movies. Is that on the table for us? It's something that I would encourage your staff.
That would not be my decision. That would be up to the college, their decision on that. And then it would, then that would be our job to make that happen.
And then with your vaccination, uh, asking your staff to report their vaccination status, do you have a percentage of how many of your staff are fully vaccinated?
Um, ninety percent. On what?
And I may have some further questions, which I'll direct to the administration and make the passing. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the trustees? Hey, your reports. What reports to follow, monthly reports, um, that will be in the effect of tonight, personnel recommendations. For the trustee to confirm, personal recommendations as submitted in the past. You are in motion. With support? Is there any discussion? Trustee, that you? Just a guess.
I don't know Lauren Nelson in campus events, but that person has served for twenty-one years. She's wonderful. And thank you very much for that service. Um,
If you can be, you, and anything to us?
And Lauren, uh, so Lauren Nelson worked in, um, media services. So he helped us set all the stuff up in the classroom.
Absolutely. Yeah, I probably know her. Yeah, yeah. Wonderful. So, um, I think, um, Kimberly Jones is in my department and I, I, she's gotten so many degrees. I suspect she's not out of yet school, but maybe not. Um, I wonder who Katie Dowdley worked with. Is that Ring Bell advisor for one year?
She was one of the initial NPR's advisors.
Ah, okay. So we've lost another professional counselor. How many counselors do we have and how many advisors do we have? See if we know that answer. Any question?
And nobody was supposed to that company at the beginning, so we thought one of the folks would write it. We did. Four, four LTCs?
Yeah.
That, that's where, so this, this one is supposed to not write that. We'll get us four.
Four. Oh, yeah. And how many advisors? I'm sorry, what? How many advisors?
In total?
Yeah. I mean, yes, twenty, thirty, fifty?
I don't know. I'm twelve at this point.
We have fifteen advisors and three of those advisors are our grant funding for our side of the ring.
Okay, that's upsetting. Oh, um, I wanted to welcome James Fashi.
Yeah.
And wonder, um, if Nadia Arpa, I don't know who that is, or do you think she came with you or is that a?
I don't see how you remember our game.
She's been here.
She's been here for a while.
For a while. Ah, is that a new position?
I don't know if they can do that.
Okay. Um, Patricia Burton has been here thirty-four years. That's longer than, almost as long as you've been. But I think those were all my customers. Um, where's it all?
Yes, thank you. Um, while we are at this, um, I would like to take to the opportunity in addition to introducing and welcoming Vice President, I'm gonna say it again.
Chief Fashi.
Fashi?
Fashi.
Okay, thank you. I have Vice President of Facilities, Brown, and I know the board has met them and Dr. Kevin. And also with us, we have Vice President Catch, wait, Swick. Did I say it right?
Swick, yes.
Yes, thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see both of you here this evening. And if this is your second day today?
Yes, that's correct.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions on personnel reports? Uh, we have a motion in support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Your donations are, yeah, thank you. Moving to financial reports for December two thousand twenty-one. The recommendation is that the board of trustees receive the financial reports for December twenty twenty-one as follows. General fund, deferred maintenance fund, capital fund, and combined schedule of investments, all funds. P, 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 Darren, do you have background you'd like to give us before we go further?
Yeah, I'll just. I'll just hit the highlights. Um, just for revenue, if you look at the right through semester, which we're starting right now, we're slightly short. I would expect it to pretty much stay in that area. This was actually the number at the end of December. I would expect it to stay similar, uh, if we finish out the semester. However, we're more than making it up in student fees. Um, we were a little conservative in our student fees. So overall, you can see that our net, we have a petition that is actually a lot larger. Uh, property taxes are on base to be collected as expected. Uh, state appropriations, as I mentioned in the past months, we do expect to finish the year, uh, six hundred thousand dollars for, uh, those kinds of things approved by the legislature. Uh, and, and as mentioned also previously, trade partnerships are significantly up. The expected fees, they weren't anticipated or expected as large as they were. So in total, total revenue there at, uh, a little over two point one million dollars favorable to what we had expected in the budget accurate through the year. Uh, turning to expenditures, also about two point two five million favorable. Really, right now, we're about, we spent about forty-seven percent of our budget and we're expecting to spend about fifty, of course, through six months later years, so we're actually spending slightly below schedule. Uh, some of this is permanent in nature. Others is driven by the fact that there's just been less activity on campus than expected. Also, that also tracks savings. Some of this permanent, some of this temporary. But in total, um, you can see here that right now at this moment, we're all conforming to a very full budget system. No further questions on it. Any questions in the trustees? Trustee Hatcher?
It under revenue in the second paragraph, um, where it says the mix of online and on campus courses and all has resulted in lower tuition revenue?
So in terms of credit hours, we were actually pretty much on budget in terms of credit hours. However, uh, difference, uh, students pay different rate situation based on where they live. So in district versus out of districts versus international or state, also depending on mode of, uh, what they're taking, whether it's in person or whether it's online. So the mix of tuitions, in other words, we're collecting more of the lower rate tuitions as opposed to the higher rate tuition. So that results in negative mix.
And, um, we list, I think, thirty-eight full-time vacancies and, um, just so you know, right now we're forty-three. So we're saving a lot of money.
Yeah, we, we have saved, uh, I think those, those vacancies, uh, are not, uh, it's, it's a product of the job market. It's difficult to go.
And part-time personnel is down?
Also down.
The number of part-timers?
Uh, the number, I think, is down as well.
Is it dangerously down or?
No.
There's a lot of.
No.
No.
I was just wondering, are classes still more teachers because they're in hard times? Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Trustee DeBarnett?
Actually, this is, going back to the Health and Fitness Center and how it integrates with our budgetary, our finances. So the, each year, the bottom line, the operating margin net drops into the college's general fund.
Not exactly, but basically it's similar to that, yes.
Where would that go on? Where would that show on our financials?
We choose the amounts, but if you look, um, more, we, we see all the financials and you're looking at now, there's a line in operating transfers called Health and Fitness Center.
Yeah, but it's blank.
Yeah, it's blank because this year we're not expecting transferring. It has, we were, the budget wasn't built on the back of the, uh, the, uh,
So past years, there's been money with transfers.
Yeah, so in past years, there would have been money to transfer.
So when I look at the Health and Fitness Center this year, nineteen to twenty-two, the net for nineteen is sixty-one. Thousand is that? Or twenty-one million, three hundred thousand, or twenty-one, one million, five hundred seventy-five thousand. It's been, so those are in past fiscal years. Did we show those on our financials?
Yes, we show those in our financials. So what, if you look at the line that says net, net operating income. So for example, the one point eight million, which you see there on the Health and Fitness Center report, there would have been a number, it was roughly equivalent to that. I don't have that number in front of me. I think I'd have been exactly one point eight one one, it could have been one point seven five, for example. That amount of money would have been transferred in and we would have used that money. You would see that money come into the general fund. And then that money would have been used throughout.
Any other questions? We have a motion before us with.
Oh, I see. Here it is. But I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the very bottom of operating margin net. Um, after, after the net operating income, after the bond payment, deferred maintenance of capital difference. So there are positive numbers each year, admittedly boosted by the federal support, open support. Where does that, those, where do those figures transfer into our financials?
Those monies will come in, um, I don't have last year's financials, but there are other non-operating activity, which you would see on, uh, the global part funding, and then we're there. We're specifically related to the Health and Fitness Center, um, and the Health and Fitness Center.
Okay. So I know we meet every month prior to this meeting to go over financials as, or trigger. For the next meeting, could you lay out some of that information over the last couple of years?
Yes.
Just so I could see how this is translating into our overall.
Yeah, I can see my data.
Thank you very much. Hey, and I appreciate your.
Now back to the motion in support.
Sorry.
For the trustees to receive these financial reports. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
When we receive, reports are accepted.
Thank you very much.
We'll move now to the facilities development report with P, P, Fashi, who happy to have you at the microphone. Welcome.
That's the report with an update of the ML renovation project. So about a hundred percent of the demolition is complete. The last of the areas, uh, could be demoed with mechanical penthouses. As you can see, although a little bit of empty, cleared out, ready for the new mechanical equipment to be delivered next month.
What part of the building is that we were looking?
That's the very top. So this is the very top of the building that is a, uh,
Not the public areas, not above?
It's on the very top floor, but it's been closed. It's a, it's a closed penthouse that houses mechanical heating, cooling, air handling equipment, boilers.
Thank you.
That was the last of the, uh, building that needed to be demoed. And so it's really there and ready for all the new equipment that's going to show up next month. The, uh, other work that's beginning to take place this last December or since the last update in December, all the chemical upwork is underway. So you can see the sheeting work, uh, air distribution, uh, copper piping that runs the hot water, mechanical conduit, wiring, IT cables, all the infrastructure, uh, in support of renovation is currently underway. The other area of work that started is the interior framing. So all the most under being installed. We'll see the framing of the art gallery is underway. If you look over to the right, you see the construction column and, and section of concrete floor that's out. A lot of the, uh, underground work for the cable lane, IT, data that had to be buried in this, in the floor. The floors were removed, the carpet was installed, uh, and a lot of that concrete is actually being poured in place now. So, um, great progress being made on the interior work and last, um, a little exterior framing on the upside as well. So all in all, uh, very aggressive schedule, but we're tracking on schedule with the ML renovation. There was a, um, question asked in the last month about the age of the building. It's constructed in nineteen ninety. Thirty years old and it's in nineteen all English. Uh, the second ongoing capital project that we have.
I have a question about ML. Do we have any sense of vandalism? Is there any threat? I mean, copper piping, this is all upon, I mean, we have security, but is there any indication that we need to worry about this?
On the ML. You know, I mean, I mean, the, the long lead item, uh, materials here, mechanical, mechanical that we looked at, very strongly, eighty percent is actually on site. So, uh, at this point, uh, the project to be procuring labor and material. Really, you know, procuring material in this, in this vein, A and B is critical. So a lot of long lead, long lead item, uh, I think that here, so we're really positioned well.
Trustee DeBarnett, question?
Just a quick question. So if all the mechanicals have been demoed, how is the place heated for the workers to?
Temporary, so there's temporary heating systems.
And that, that's just the contractors bring that in so that the space is heated?
That is correct. Yeah. It's all part of general conditions and, and if there is temporary heat, keep the building at a, at a condition where it won't freeze pipes and. No other question about the ML renovation. Well, we'll talk about the second, uh, ongoing capital project, which is the Great Lakes Regional Training Center expansion. This is a two-story, eight thousand square foot addition to the building. It has been housed three my ops, two classrooms and a lot of storage space within all of this. Project kicked off, the construction kicked off on schedule in January, demolition is ongoing, and, uh, the target completion date is ended June. Uh, there's not a whole lot more to report, next, next month will be a, a more detailed report on the progress of this. And finally included in the report is just an update of our deferred maintenance project. So, the current list of about eighteen projects, I'm just gonna highlight three or four and ask the answer question on the remaining. Um, parking lot lighting, uh, repairs, uh, data equipment is on order. Uh, we are, uh, darkback compliant, we're pictured that we are looking to replace in parking lots. And we are targeting an end of June completion date on that. Campus-wide lighting upgrade is a project that supports one of our goals or initiatives for two percent reduction in utility and energy usage. Is replacing a lot of old, present fixtures, all of the work is focused in the classroom. So, to replace an old, uh, lighting fixtures in the classroom, we're going to be efficient, play the fixtures. I could report that in the, uh, business application, we're rebuilding the, uh, new south and north storefront. Doors are in place, are completely installed and operational. Just, um, a few access control items to, to be finished up and controlled, so the air pumps in the enterprise. Project number ten, campus-wide roof wall protection, I wanted to note this project, um, it's not particularly a high-dollar amount. It's a, it's a project that, that most people never see, um, because it's all a pile of up and a roof. It's a, it's a project that includes, um, playoffs and handle, but it is, it shows the commitment of the college to safety. I just wanted to highlight that particular project. Uh, on the second, uh, the alley and gray finding signage, uh, project that's under, that's ongoing, it's, um, current signs are here, and are currently going up. Yes.
Um, I've had some questions from people who work in LA building about what's going on with the number of the rooms. So, are the, have the faculty been aware of what the number is going to be or why the number is changing? They're kind of, it's kind of, um, confusing.
Is it?
Um, no.
I mean, uh, it's.
I hate asking Kim.
Sure, very good. There's been a lot of communication about void binding, the changes and the big push that's been because of safety. We make sure somebody's into that building, find somebody, maybe need something that they.
Well, I'm not complaining about the number, it's just a lot of the communication.
I would assume maybe people got caught up in the holidays and might have missed some emails, but faculty meetings, emails, that's been communicated a ton at the division level, all the open teams have the maps, we have, um, stations in all the campus building, in the building around the building, they help direct people.
No.
Emails and text messages around to the students. New signs are up on everyone's door they work for, you got the campus, but there's been lots of communication about changing of the number. Um, and there were two faculty members, two academics, that, that responded, obviously.
Thank you.
That concludes my report, I'll have the answering questions.
Trustee DeMarty?
I think I heard you say, on the Great Lakes Regional Training, the United Auto Workers aren't, isn't our partner the plumbers and pipe fitters? On that? Oh, so UA, it's not UA, don't, UA, it's the UA, and that's a, Association of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters. And they have, through the years, had an annual gathering in our community that brings a tremendous economic benefit to the entire county. Um, so, and I'm sure they, they, I'm sure they're friends with the auto workers.
Right.
But I, I want us to recognize our partners, um, the plumbers and pipe fitters who are contributing to the problem.
Absolutely, thank you. Any further questions?
I'd just like to thank you for the LED lighting in the classrooms. It will help a lot of people who are in my ranks. Because those other, um, fixtures were just awful for teachers, um, who suffered from that, so, thank you.
Well, and it's energy efficient and money-saving. All in all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Remarks. I had the pleasure today of a half dozen other community college board chairs at School of Draft College, to meet a woman named Brandy Johnson, who is Mike Hanson's successor at the CCA, which is the College Association. And she's, uh, she's got some good history in Michigan and state government, working at the governor's office. And her aspiration is, this year, to attend every community college's trustee meeting, so, Brandy Johnson, I've invited to, to talk with us about a schedule, she could come here and this week, and we'll all have a chance to meet.
Have a good dinner.
Well, good. Any other comments from trustees? Trustee Hatcher?
Um, I've actually written some comments for the first time. Um, these past two COVID years have been challenging for everyone from every direction. We had to keep up to date on state and national directives. We've had staff working at home for the first time. Um, faculty teaching online more and more, uh, online counseling and advising. Questions of ventilation and context facing in the classrooms. Technology support for all of these changes. When to return to classes and work on campus, when is face-to-face? What is sick time now? What is, uh, vaccination, testing, quarantine, masks? Quick decisions and notifications, um, just to name a few. How flexible can we be? This is a huge new job. And how does it affect marketing and recruitment and student success? There's no question that WCC has persevered and has been resilient in this new world. The sudden decision to cancel face-to-face classes for one week caused lots of anxiety and questions. I would never second-ga, second-guess the decision, but the process leaves some questions. I know firsthand that faculty were not part of the conversation. They were informed and encouraged to work together to make it work, but they were not at the decision table. The decision-making table could be larger, including administration, health experts, custodians, IT fa, fa, faculty, facilities. My experience says that the best decisions come when involved those who are affected, not simply notifying them of changes. We all miss things, more is better. What are our contingencies? What about if? What if we have to shut down again? What about new face-to-face? What if we have to, um, have all face-to-face in the near future? Both, and maybe all of it in one semester? Perhaps a representative task force for us, um, as long as it takes. We could have a new office of COVID and health, um, including all the people who were affected, so that all of those details can be remembered and addressed. We continuously praise the faculty and staff for their cooperation and their ingenuity. And their hard work, we need to use them in making these decisions in this new time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from trustees?
I just want to say, I'm.
Sure.
Happy to be so great to see everyone, you know, they're out at times, their personal things that they take care of. Um, it's great to, to meet the, the new employees that we have on board. Thank you for coming to Washington Community College. Sure you will enjoy being here. Please forgive our, um, questioning of maybe some of the things that you talked about. We just want to get a better understanding, because we all know that you work so hard, you do so well. And we just want to stay on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you. President Blanca?
Thank you for those words. And, um,
Sweet, back to our agenda. We turned down a whole business. And in TAN E, we have a resolution to be post-secondary partner for Plymouth Canton Community Schools' little college programs. And the agenda for action tonight, recommendation is, if the board approve the resolution of support for Plymouth Canton Community Schools and submitted. Your motion? And there is support. Is there any discussion?
I never discussed this last one. Um, and I know that Blake is not here tonight. Um, but do we have, we have some idea of how many of these partnerships we have, in this state of issue?
I'm an expert on this, it's a mystery.
I'm, I'm supposed to be. I'm not sure exactly the number of how many we do have. Uh, our, Kim, our Vice President, could you come forward, please? Thank you.
Maybe Kim, my other question is.
I'm not sure if she does agree.
How do we, how do we support them and what's our responsibility to this?
They're, they're, they're all very different, they're all very, so, we actually have one in Livingston County. And we actually have some classes that happen actually on campus at Livingston County. Some of the students are taking classes online, and some of those students actually come to campus. And if they do a thirteenth year, they'll come to campus, you know, they won't be the high school anymore. So, Livingston County is the big one, we have in addition to WGMC. And then we also have the one that we're proposing here with Plymouth County Schools.
And our responsibility is to also look at.
The academic courses, the academic courses, so that, again, the idea is that we're providing those students with a pathway and options and courses that they don't have at their own home.
So, we're offering those courses to them, that's.
That is the biggest, the biggest, okay, we're helping them provide those pathways, but it's, you know, it's enrollment for us.
Sure.
That those students are getting, you know, they're receiving enrollment, they're taking classes with us.
Yes, good, that's my question.
But I, this one, in the next DOT, in number, uh, middle schools, middle schools.
Is it over, middle charter school?
Over a hundred?
I wish so.
No, no, no.
It has different than it was in our board and hall.
Sure, that's very good, yeah, thank you. I figured since I had to sign it, I'd rather ask this.
Any further discussion? Vanessa, please call the role.
Sheriff Alman?
Yes.
I, Sheriff Dana, you ask, Heather and Harvey?
DeMarty, yes.
Sergeant Hatcher?
Yes.
Sergeant Corning?
Yes.
Thank you, the resolution is approved. Next is the receipt of the FY twenty-one single audit. For action, the recommendation is, if the board received the fiscal year twenty-one single audit report as submitted. Do I bear motion? Of moving.
Second.
And I have support, is there any discussion? Vanessa, please call the role.
Sheriff Alman?
Yes.
I, Sheriff Dana, you ask, Heather and Harvey?
DeMarty, yes.
Sergeant Hatcher?
Yes.
Sergeant Corning?
Yes.
Thank you, the recommendation is approved. New business. For discussion, TAN G in the package tonight, pull ahead funding for technology infrastructure upgrade from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-two. P. Barnes, this one, to shed on this for us, please.
Yeah, very briefly, I, I think the board is well aware of year two, of the year plan to upgrade the technology infrastructure. Uh, we're spending four point seven million dollars over those three years. Uh, what's happened is, because of the supply chain issues, uh, we're having much longer lead times getting the, getting the ordering. So, on average, it's been six to nine months longer than it would normally take to get the order. So, what we're asking is to pull ahead, the funding that you see there for year three, one point five million dollars, we're simply adding, asking to pull that ahead in fiscal year twenty-two, so that we can begin the ordering process without a problem. So, that it actually arrives in fiscal year twenty-two. So, it's really, there's really no additional ask, we're just asking to pull ahead the timing of it. And in fact, the cash wouldn't really change that much, the cash is still likely to go up in order fiscal year twenty-two.
I'm very impressed. Thank you. Next, we have campus logic student form software contract for renewal. Is, you already trapped in the house, yes? Hello, welcome.
So, the student form software that, um, we're bringing forward today is the software that students use to upload documents. So, they can upload them remotely as well as in the internet. The software allows the documents to be uploaded and be signatureed, which is a real revolution happening that way. It also increases our accuracy on the reporting, the comparison between like tax forms and the student ones on the app. So, that is what that software does. And this is an incredible, um, deal, I guess is the right word. If we were to go out and purchase that separately right now, it'd be well over a hundred thousand dollars for one year. We've done a partner with campus logic, the Museum of Software, and we helped test it, we're sort of a phase site for that. So, it's such, they put our, our subscription rates extremely low, which is also why that's a three-year.
Thank you, any questions? Trustee Davis?
How do we find out about this, uh, software?
So, um, we've been with them since two thousand sixteen, and I was at a financial aid conference, and they were in a little room, and they were thinking about our software. And I did, and that's, um, started our relationship with them. And just that, the ability for students to upload the upload documents, that allowed us to, to put it very quickly, really, perhaps too much, but we went remote.
Yes.
Um, the campus logic software, does this software also improve, um, security features to, you know, encrypt the documents, keep them secure? That's, that's an added feature that is very important, I think, to make the board aware that there are security features in the software. This isn't just a copy and upgrade to your network drive. This is a copy and upgrade to your network drive, it's not secure and other people can get to it. The software is a database that manages, you can access that, that information, that keeps the documents there for future use in the record. So, I think it's really important to see, we wrote it, it's not just a tech manager's. So, then the gap, then, then, does it record who logs in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. IP addresses of who's logged in.
From, from, uh, from your office?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
All of that.
So, staff who access documents that gets logged?
Yeah.
Any staff member who accesses a document that gets logged is.
That gets logged, yeah, there's a whole population.
Oh, thank you. So, if somebody wants to publish my transcript, hold over it.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarity.
Thank you.
Trustee DeMarty?
Um, I'm supportive of this, I think it's a great idea. I, I note that on the, on three-year contract, that the first year is this fiscal year. So, are we not on contract right now?
We are on contract, our current contract expires, um, in May.
Okay, so this, this resumes in May. Um, and our normal course of action would be to take this up for approval next meeting, does that timeline work?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Blocker, did you ever? The campaign. Now would be timely, this, the journey is our next time.
I would like to, if I may. So, um, I think the thing to board with your question. Yeah, and, uh, for those of you that may be new here, and, uh, or, that is the, a role of the board trustees is to ask questions. And, um, and sometimes, you know, I actually, um, I may, trustee Hatcher kinda told me about this. Uh, oh, you go, uh, not what, exactly what you read. About the COVID idea and the task force. And, um, and I appreciate what you have said, so, and, and, you know, I just think it's important for everyone to realize that when new members ask this question, it's a good thing, it's not about. a good thing, it's not about, it's a good thing because we're all working together. So, um, I just want to personally appreciate you, the questions that you asked here, and the questions that you asked before we came here, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all of you. I just want to make sure that you understand that you're not being put to a test. It's, it's just, it, this is a way of meeting and talking, so, in a, we go open transparent.
Well, good, thank you very much. Rusty Hatcher? Yes.
Um, in this wonderful looking back looking forward, under the education is the Alpha Scholar, and, um, are there any African Americans in the Alpha Scholar program? Because there aren't any in the picture.
There are some in the program, yes.
Oh, might have been, I remember that, too.
It would be, it was still, it was, it was still just right out of this home, so some students chose to come, some students did not.
But there are African Americans. Well, that's, that's...
Well, barring the emergence of any official business, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. I move for adjournment.
I second that.
There's support, any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, our meeting is adjourned, appreciate your interest.